All right, people are coming back online. All right. Actually, before we do, my understanding is we've got a hard stop at 12:30 with SCTV, and that'll be when we break for lunch. So I'll turn things over. We're going to review community services and starting with social services. So I assume I'll turn the floor over to Kristen. Wendy, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I just had, I just had one more question on the town manager budget. Okay, because we, I didn't get to ask it. I just wanted to ask about the legal services. If you could, it shows a $25,000 increase for this year or next, this coming year? So I just wanted, if you could speak to that, what's the cause of the increases?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So we have been spending more than the $40,000 that was budgeted. And so we felt that, you know, increasing that rather than continuing to overspend was probably a prudent move. We do have six collective bargaining agreements here. So when you think about, you know, the support work that our attorneys provide, I think, you know, increasing that above the 40 probably makes a lot of sense. But then also, we have some processes that, you know, aren't as common as they are, you know, in other places, such as, you know, we need to utilize our attorney, for example, if we get grievances and they come to the personal subcommittee, et cetera. So just with some of the processes we have here, having six bargaining groups, I think that's probably a bit more of a realistic number than what we had been budgeting.
Any other questions, Wendy?
No, that's good, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Wendy. I should, I should have pointed that out. Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Good morning, everyone.
Happy Saturday.
Thank you. Yes, happy Saturday. And thank you for all being here today to listen to our budget. I'm going to attempt to share my screen now. So let me just get to that.
Let me know if you need me, Kristen.
Can you see my slides?
Not yet.
You want me to pull them up, Kristen? Would that be easier?
Sure, I have them on my screen, but I think I'm not connecting. I might not have done it correctly, so.
No worries. It's all ready to go, so I can just pull it up. All right.
Okay, so first slide. The main driver behind the increase for the social, community and social services budget this year is related to the cost of personnel.
Want me to pull them up, Kristen? Would that be easier?
Sure, I have them on my screen, but I think I'm not connecting. I might not have done it correctly, so.
No worries. It's all ready to go.
Nicole, can you go on mute?
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Wow. Okay, so the, the main increase is related to the, the known and the projected contractual increases for the community and social services staff. Our total increase for our overall budget is 2.77% or an increase of $16,947. And you'll see it's broken out in the Social Services Administration. The increase is 2.21 or $6,623. The senior center increase is 5.14% or $7,754. And the increase to the senior transportation or dial-a-ride service is 1.58. And that's $2,570, and that is through our contract with Martell. In social services, we have a total of 6.45 FTEs. The majority of that is direct service staff in social services and the senior center. And we are also reflecting a small portion of FTEs for our lunch service staff. Next. The areas of focus for this year. We are continuing to look at a way that we can better collect our data and our statistics to be able to share with you. You know, that became increasingly important as we went through the pandemic and we saw how, how much our services increased, particularly in the areas of food, security and insecurity, and in areas of new things that we did as a response to the pandemic. So we want to continue to focus on that. And this upcoming year, we're going to be implementing a new web-based case management system, which is going to help streamline our work and be able to better track what services we are providing to our clients. And prior to the pandemic, one of our goals, which is now showing up again because we weren't able to do this last year, but we want to start getting out into the community more to raise awareness of what community and social services does and what we have to offer. And to, to better make those connections with our community partners. And we're also considering what would it look like if we were able to start an annual appeal? Most of the, well, all of the funds that we have to assist our clients minus our trust funds are related or dependent upon donations. And that fund that we have, it became very clear over the course of the beginning of the pandemic that we need to start to focus on how we can keep that solvent and keep a healthy balance as we help our clients. We know that more tough times are ahead for them as we move through this pandemic, and we want to be able to help everybody as best as we can. Next, please. And we have, again, $7,736 in totality for full-time salaries, which is due to our anticipated wage increases and potential negotiated contractual increases. We, as Maria had mentioned before, there are some areas of public agency support that are in the community and social services budget. We do provide $5,000 in funding for Meals on Wheels, and that is in the social services budget. However, you'll see that there is offsetting revenue from the Belden Trust Fund of $5,000 for the Meals on Wheels. And new this year, not new to the budget, but new this year, we're going to move the Hartford Interval House funding to the Board of Selectmen budget rather than keeping it in my budget. And we also reflected our budget, the $8,000 that is required for our town match for the Youth Service Bureau Fund, and that is going to move over to operating transfers. And we have a small increase in senior center part-time salaries. Again, those are the kitchen staff when we're open. And the increase is due to the minimum wage increase. The full cost of the Tuesday and Wednesday lunch program are fully reflected in our budget. But you'll also see that we have incoming revenue from the Belden Trust again. And that's, was $9,100, which helped to pay for the cost of the Wednesday lunch service. And as I previously mentioned, the increase around dial-a-ride is just only related to what our contractual increase was, which is $2,570. The full cost of dial-a-ride is offset by, we have grant revenue of $40,720. And part of that is an operating grant. And then the remainder is for our enhanced dial-a-ride program, which provides our medical transportation and, when able, our jump onboard senior center transportation for off-site programs. Next. Last year, you graciously funded the money for us to replace one of our buses. We did receive the grant funding. We're in the process of accepting it now. So congratulations to all of us for, for receiving that. And we will be working now at the end of this year, and it should be here in the spring, I believe, to replace our oldest van, which is a 2014. It's recommended that vans are placed after five years and/or 100,000 miles. So we're looking forward to replacing our oldest vehicle. And what we're asking from you for the upcoming year, for the next CNR project, is to replace our second bus. Our second bus is a 2016, and as you can see, it's just over the 100,000 mile mark. This CNR project is asking for $12,800 from the general government budget, which covers 20% of the van. And if we receive another grant, it would be for the 80% of the second vehicle as well. And then we would have two new vehicles, and we would stick to the, the recommended replacement schedule moving forward. Next. And the one service improvement that we do have here, as you heard in Maria's presentation last week to you, it's coming from the Simsbury Spirit Council. The Spirit Council has received funding from you through a supplemental appropriation this year of $3,000 to begin the work around data and, data collection and auditing. And we are anticipating that the full cost of a project of this nature would be closer to $25,000. So the budget request for FRI 23 would be the additional $22,000 to finish the collection of data and analyzation around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that is the end of my slides, and I'm happy to make any further comments or any, answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Kristen.
You're welcome.
You know, it's yet another one of our town departments where it's a reminder of how much you've done this year, and really, in an extraordinary year. And I appreciate the summary. I have some questions, but I'd like to see if others would like to go first.
Eric, just a quick comment on the slide that's on the, on the page here. We're probably going to talk about it later, but I would strongly encourage all of us to, to start thinking about creative ways to get this into, into our proposed budget this year. While it is a service improvement at a, at a, at a strategic level, it's something that we all committed to in the fall in terms of our priorities for, for this year. You know, we did take a step forward a couple of weeks ago and, and start this funding off. But as we've, as we've dove into our, our diversity, equity, and inclusion journey here, and, and really gotten serious about it, you know, as a board, as a community, as a town, I think we need to be able to find ways to put dollars up. And I know 22,000 is hard when we get down to the end of the day. But I think this is something that I'm going to strongly advocate for when we start making decisions. And, and I encourage, I encourage you guys to, to, at least meet me halfway or be open-minded to finding creative ways to solve this, I guess is my point. Thanks.
Sean, I'm gonna, I want to back you up on that and, and share why I'm supporting what's on this slide as well. You know, what I wanted to share with this group, you know, diversity and equity and inclusion has been incredibly important to me in my three years on the board. And I think, you know, one way you can, that's obviously the right thing to do, and it's the right thing for our community. But when you put that aside, one of the things that opened my eyes when we did the, the LGBT rainbow installation, it opened my eyes that this is also not just good policy, but it's economic development. And when we did that project, it sent up a giant rainbow flare over the state of Connecticut that said Simsbury is open for business. And that was not unnoticed by people across our region. And I think if we approve this money, or if we don't approve this money, it sends up a similar message well beyond Simsbury's borders. And I want to figure out creative ways that we can make this work in a very challenging budget year.
I, I just want to add that it was, Spirit Council is one of the Board of Selectmen's top priorities. If you look at our, our sheet.
I, I agree, it's a top priority, but it doesn't state that it has to be a hard dollar priority. So I don't want that to be a message that, for me, goes across the, the town, certainly committed to the mission, but it doesn't mean that it, it's at all costs. Eric, can I, just before you have your, your comments? Because I think Kristen doesn't get a chance to talk about, you know, we don't, so this is not necessarily a budget idea issue for today, but it is about the budget in the past. And I know that Kristen barely ever gets to talk about the, the journey that she's on and the journey that her department is on, its delivery of services. And I can remember, you just mentioned three years ago, you know, when we were new, you know, we were kids, and we were just kids on this board, and Kristen was too. I, we, one of the conversations that developed from this presentation was the, the, essentially the understaffing that she was experiencing. And I was, I was asking questions. I was kind of shocked at how, you know, how we were doing with, how were we doing what we were doing with what little that we had? And, you know, and I, and from that conversation, I put forth, you know, I pressed into the, the dialogue adding, transitioning some part-timers to full-time and, and adding, Kristen, you added a, a, a full-time staff member to your team back then under that budget, and that was, it was a sacrifice that the town made. But it's, you know, it was the right one as far as I'm concerned. Can you talk a little bit, you just talked about the experience that you went through this past year and are going through? Talk about that additional staff member, what, what the impact that that person has had to your team and to the, and to, to the, the town services at large, if you could. Just get a color. And it's to the person themselves, and so they're wonderful. This is not a judgment or a performative view about them. But about that add to staff, specifically in the year we just came out of and going forward.
Sure, absolutely. I'd be happy to do that. And just briefly, before I talk about this year, I think I also want to point out that this first year, the year that we've just been through, is really the first full year that that position has been filled. Unfortunately, the first person that we had hired, well, she was wonderful and did tremendous things in the short time that she was with us, was, did not spend a full year with us, and then we had a vacancy. So the community social worker that's with us now, Rachel Loveland, she has done a phenomenal job. And honestly, if we had not created that position and brought on an additional social worker, I can say with a very high level of confidence that there's no way that my department could have been able to successfully do the things that we did this year to serve the public in a pandemic. One of the biggest things, as you all know, it has been our response to food insecurity in town. And we have, we quickly transitioned from every four weeks of food distribution to every three weeks throughout the summer, and then went back to every four weeks. And our numbers, we had averaged 80 households prior to the pandemic. We're now serving 140. And there are over 30 individuals that are receiving delivery through our homebound delivery program. If I had not had an additional social worker, there is no way that I would have been able to do all of that work on my own. I have a wonderful assistant, and we have a great part-time outreach worker and our two full-time senior center staff. But simply, it could not have been done. Also, we needed to very quickly change the way that we were delivering our services. One example is our energy assistance program. So typically, you know, we are helping almost 200 households with their energy assistance, and they would come in and sit with us and have an appointment. And this year, we needed to do everything electronically and by mail, which created more work for our staff. And if we did not have the additional social worker, we would have not been able to process those applications, and people would still be waiting for energy assistance. So I think that adding that position is one of the best things that you probably could have ever done for my department. We're really grateful. And it's kind of, it's not a joke, it's not meant to be funny, but it kind of is a little ha-ha. She reflects that when she started working for the town, we very quickly, within a month, went into the pandemic. So she's looking forward to finding out what her real job is when we come out of the pandemic, other than feeding people and doing energy assistance and, and work with the Youth Service Bureau. And just one last thing I'll add is that we've really increased the work that we're doing with our Youth Service Bureau. Previously, the funding often went into just like buying items or funding programs. And this year, we're really focused on, even though we're in a pandemic, what can we do that is new to help support the community? We're bringing in additional speakers that are going to be doing presentations virtually. And we're also adding in some new activities. And one quick thing that we're doing, just to share with you, is we're going to be supporting a four-week-long presentation and providing yoga, mindfulness, and meditation for our youth. And we're going to be doing that right before seniors and high schoolers in general take their finals. So I'm proud of the work that we've been able to do with the additional help.
Great, thanks for that highlight. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Kristen? I, I did want to recognize Cheryl Cook and Nicole Kodak, who are co-chairs of Spirit Council. And I just wanted to see if there was anything else that you wanted to add, especially around the funding request while, while we have you.
Just a quick thing. Thank you all for being here today and for your service. I know it's a long day, so I'll keep it very brief. I just want to say that you did prioritize our work, and we very much appreciate that. Somewhere in the back of your book, around page 206 or so, is your sheet of priorities, and we come right after your financial priorities. And I note that you call it maintaining the quality of life. Well, we would assert here that what we do is improving the quality of life and that this service improvement actually represents trying to improve the quality of life for everybody who lives in Simsbury by promoting these goals. And not only the data goal, but also our, our public engagement efforts also. So thank you very much for, for listening to our pleas here, and I'm going to let Nicole have a, a short say too.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. I, I did want to just join the National League of Cities and celebrate our women in local government by giving a little shout out for Maria, Amy, Melissa, Erica, Jackie, Wendy, all the people that are women leaving town, leaving town government services. So a little shout out there. We just had our Let's Talk on Women, so it's on my mind. Thank you, because I know it's hard to balance, and COVID has disproportionately impacted women. A budget request is new. It is a new service improvement, if you look at it that way. But it's also very, very small in the total dimension of things. And we just wanted to say that we, we want to, Spirit wants to position ourselves to be the town's central coordinating group to assess and improve our overall efforts to become more welcoming, inclusive, and diverse. We really appreciate that you appointed us as an official committee, that you signed and endorsed the resolution, and that you've made us a top priority. We want to get to the point, and we think we're ready to now going forward this year, to support the resolution in the five areas it calls out of education, housing, health, food security, and criminal justice, with a through line of being welcoming and inclusive. And we will get the data, if you approve that funding, to dimensionalize this. But it seems that we're hearing that Simsbury has a little bit of a reputation that we were not aware of before, about being not always so welcoming and inclusive. So we do want to engage in that work. And we are seeing the census data that just projects that 2030 will be a real tipping point for the US population, that the population's going to age and be 65-plus, that will outweigh the 18-minus population for the first time in US history. And will be very diverse, and by 2045, I guess, the non-Hispanic whites are no longer projected to be the majority. So we're also seeing data saying that people are moving from cities to suburbs. So we just want to partner with you to help drive this work forward and, and make the leadership, as well as the engage in the work of diversity and inclusion in Simsbury. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Yeah, thanks, Nicole. Are there questions for Spirit Council while we have them?
Well, I just have one quick question. The, the schools have the Equity Council, correct, which is a similar mission in the schools? I mean, I'm not really sure. Do you guys work with them? You know, is there cross work being done? And if we do this study, that this analysis, will you be sharing it with that group or including them?
Thanks, Wendy. I can answer that question for you. We do have two separate groups work, doing this work. What we found when this work started over two years ago is that there, the issues involving the school system were, were very specialized and particular to the school system. And we felt that they needed their own internal processes to work on that, and their own, their staff, their students. And, and that type of information is particular to the schools. What we do is particular to the community as a whole. We do share members. Sue Hamrock Lemke is on both. Nicole is actually on both. And we have parents who participate in both, but the work is very different, and the data is very different. The data that is collected on students is not only confidential to students most of the time. So they are not able to share all of their specific quantitative data with us unless it's depersonalized. And so that's, that's different. Our data will reflect community demographics as a whole and also community attitudes and policies. So that's completely separate from what the school is doing on their own policies. And I know they have worked in DEI improvements into the Board of Education budget this year also. And we are very grateful for that, and we, we do work in tandem, but we are separate.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, what, it's, just following up on Wendy's question, the concept. And I apologize if you or the team or had addressed this in the past. But, you know, we often benchmark ourselves, either, sometimes it helps us and sometimes against our peer, peer towns in the area. And this, as this is an opportunity to highlight yourselves once again, and the opportunity we can for marketing, as we've talked about, as one of your requests. And this is not about regionalization at all. But talk about peer towns and where they are on this journey with either similar, because we know this is, this is, this is an initiative that's formal at a much higher level. So where are we? Are we, are we ahead of the pack to the peers? You know, I, because I want to be a cheerleader for you guys in that sense. So talk about Simsbury being leaders in the Spirit Council concept.
I appreciate that. I always liked cheerleading from you. We are, I would say we're ahead of the pack. Our, our neighboring towns are getting on board with this work, and we are in communication with them. Kristen, you know, as our staff liaison, is reaching out to staff in our neighboring towns. Right now, we are, are talking to Farmington, and Bloomfield is next on our, our list. We have also had towns reach out to us because they have seen our members presenting at programs such as Health Equity Solutions and things like that, and then contacted us to find out what we're doing. So our outreach subcommittee is going to speak, like, to the town of Easton reached out to us. And we've talked to Colchester, and, you know, we've, we've contacted Glastonbury just to get data points, you know, where they are. You know, not to have any formal meetings, but just to see where they are in their process. We are unique in having the separate educational and community branches of this work. We think that it's the best way to address those particular educational issues. And it was one of the things that came out of the Department of Justice forum that we held two years ago. And after hearing from community members in that forum and the Department of Justice liaison helping us formulate this plan, that's where we went with it, and we think that it's, it's the best way to go forward on this. So yes, we see ourselves as leaders in this field. I don't, I don't know if Kristen wants to, to talk to that, but.
I would agree that we've done a lot of work, and I have seen and heard that other community groups are looking at us to see how we've started our process and what path that we're taking. I'm very excited to meet with Farmington and Bloomfield. We're in the process of reaching out to them now. They have similar action groups that have been formed, and we're looking forward to finding out, you know, where we are in line with them and what are they doing, what can we do, and is there a potential for partnership? You know, we, we know that the valley, other valley towns are starting to look at these initiatives, and it would be really great if we could partner with them and, you know, potentially share speakers and resources.
Yeah, I see, I see, I see down the road, you know, just kind of visualization, you know, I see down the road as you, as you knit together this, 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 this movement, this wave of, of effort and initiative and intent, and you knit together town by town by town, then the, collectively, your voice gets louder. And the opportunity to not only, your voice gets louder, not only to lever your message downward, which is into And the opportunity to not only, your voice gets louder, not only to lever your message downward, which is into us essentially to be better people, but upward. And hopefully at some point, if there is, you guys can collectively knit together a large enough consortium of town, then, then monies possibly for budgetary initiatives and opportunities for development come from someplace else. It all comes from us, but I think that would be, it's exciting to think about what you could build on that direction and get, and get money from, from other sources rather than directly here to, to then really push your messaging out. So.
Chris, that's my question. Sherry, have you guys looked at other funding? Have you looked at grants for this to get the data?
We have. We've been, we've actually had active discussions with the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. The problem, and it's both, you know, a curse and a blessing for us, is that we are a town committee. And many of these grants are specific to 501(c)(3) organizations. So, for some of the larger grants, we would have to be partnered with a group that is already established as a nonprofit. Maria very kindly looked at some, a couple of those opportunities for us. And that was the answer, but we continue to pursue that to see if there are any local organizations or regional organizations that we can work with to support those grant opportunities. We have partnered with the library on a grant request, which I'm sure Lisa will tell you about later on. The library has been tremendously supportive of our, our efforts. They, they run our programming through their Zoom feed. They have started DEI book collections and conversation starters. And we've worked very closely with them on this effort. So, our work is winding into other departments' work and we love that because that's, that's us moving forward as a community. And so, as Nicole said, you know, we kind of see ourselves as a hub, you know, where can we reach out and where do those spokes land? And, and that's how we move forward.
I could just say some more things too. I put the link to the Farmington Racial Equity Task Force in the chat, just so you can refer to it. They are impressive in their organization and they're going to make a difference in their community because they've engaged everyone across the town at the leadership level, down to the resident level. So, Maria put us in touch and Kristin's going to reach out formally for us to connect with them. We participate in their programs. They offer a once a month conversation as well, like we do. And theirs is on education. So, that might be something we could think about going forward. But also the other thing I did want to just mention is the marketing requests that we asked for. I don't like the word marketing because it implies a business or a logo or advertising or whatever. It's really public engagement. And so, once we get our data together and it's about you guys as leaders engaging with the residents and other officials in town to say, what is the vision for Simsbury? Here it is. Come be part of it. Or to get the word out to other prospective community members for businesses or residents to join us and, and say that, you know, we are, we are inclusive, we are welcoming, we are open for business, like Eric said.
Thanks Nicole. Are there any other questions for Spirit? Okay. I, I had had another question for Kristin, totally changing gears. So, there's no easy way to make this transition. But this is, this is about, well, first of all, thank you Nicole and, and Cheryl for being with us. This on the, on the topic of replacement vehicles, not specific to social services, but more generally. So, I understand the schedule of five years or 100,000 miles. Can you just talk a little bit about where that analysis comes from? Are you looking at the ability, you know, to resell? Are you looking at the cost of repairs after 100,000 miles? And I just think about the, the benefit of identifying some vehicles where there is less of a risk where we could push them another one or two years and, and capture those savings. But I wanted the professionals to respond to that.
Sure. And, and I'll give my best answer. And then I might actually ask either Maria or Tom if they wanted to add into that. Unfortunately, this is not my strongest area, but I will do my best to answer your question. The five years and 100,000 miles is a direction that comes from the Greater Hartford Transit when they provide us with the grant funding. And there's a certain period of time where they do own the bus. And then it does eventually get turned over to us and we receive the title. So, we follow that guideline because that's what they provide to us. And then also, and again, the mechanical piece is not my strong suit, but I, you know, I do know that as vehicles wear, I think our goal is to keep the vehicles as new and low mileage as we can so that we make sure that they're always safe for our seniors who are of course vulnerable passengers. And as they do get older and you need parts, it does become expensive, especially if larger things like your wheelchair lift should break. Or if your cooling system starts to not work, those can be very expensive as it gets to be older. But I don't know if Maria or if Tom have anything that they want to add to that. I know Tom has helped us in the past when the vehicles come off the road in terms of what to do with them next.
Yeah, Kristin, I think you provided a very nice summary for us. And then just another piece, again, I think we're really fortunate regarding the fleet for Dial-A-Ride. And that typically, if awarded the grant by the state, they pay for 80% of the replacement costs. And then we do have very, very modest fees we do collect from our Dial-A-Ride users. And that goes into essentially a fund that's been used for the future replacement. So, there is a 20% local match, but that local match does come from the user fees. So, in terms of the capital expenses associated with Dial-A-Ride, that's not being paid for through tax dollars. But the operating portion of Dial-A-Ride, a very, a very large chunk of that is in fact paid for by our tax dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are there other questions for social services? Okay. Then we'll move on. Thank you Kristin. We'll move on to the library and we'll turn it over to Lisa.
Great. Good morning. Let me just share my screen.
20 minutes of morning left.
Okay. All right. So, the increase to the operating budget for the library is $36,969 or 2.2%. And I can tell you, as always, the largest drivers of the library budget are contractually negotiated salaries for personnel. Then if you look, we have 23.73 budgeted full-time equivalent staff members. And I can tell you that nearly all of them are direct service providers. Areas of focus for the library for next year to increase library engagement. One of the reasons that we generally focus on library engagement is that the library is, you know, supported by the taxpayers. So, we want all of them to take advantage of all the things that we offer. We want to increase the number of library cardholders by 2%, increase material circulation, including digital content by 2%. And you might think this past year, we have not increased the number of library cardholders, but I can tell you, we've had hundreds and hundreds of new library cards issued over the past year so that people can use our digital content. We would like to increase virtual engagement through a variety of means, including social media, virtual programming and live streaming events. I can share with you that since last March, library staff have provided 1,347 virtual programs, of which 20, over 20,000 people have attended. We've also served thousands of residents through curbside service and hundreds of residents through our remote notary service. So, this year, one of the things that we'll also be working on is creating a new strategic plan to guide the library for the next five years. There is a committee formed by the Library Board of Trustees that comprises stakeholders, library administration, library staff members and community members to help develop this plan. So, that's all inclusive for the entire community. And of course, since the library personnel is one of the biggest cost drivers, I think it's important to invest in their development going forward and always. So, we will continue to cross-train staff to improve efficiency and workflow. And that will help us meet the needs of the community. And one of the other initiatives that we're working on is staff development around equity, diversity and inclusion. And then we'll begin integrating those EDI aspects into library service and work. And I can tell you that we've actually already started our EDI training. We had our first workshop a few weeks ago. And we have another introductory workshop for staff on the 24th of this month. So. Another thing that we'll be doing next year is supporting job seekers and businesses and the local economy through library programs, materials. And of course, those services provided by Sherem, our Business and Career Center Coordinator. He will work closely with the Economic Development Commission to support their mission and goals and provide learning and skill building opportunities for those in search of employment. One of the most recent programs that he provided was a resume writing workshop that he did in conjunction with the Ridgefield Library. And it was all virtual, of course. So, we extended our reach that way. And there were, I think, 46 people that participated in that one virtual workshop on resume writing. And of course, throughout the pandemic, Sherem has been providing timely information to local businesses and entrepreneurs regarding the executive orders, the federal guidelines and funding opportunities that come out, sometimes on a weekly basis. So, these, those have been important during pandemic and they will continue to be important going forward. Budget highlights, as I mentioned, the biggest increase to the budget is $29,226, which is full-time salaries due to anticipated general wage and step increases that are negotiated contractually. And of that, $29,6,763 is attributable to step increases. And of course, with minimum wage going up, the library does have one of the largest clusters of people making minimum wage. So, the increase to staff salaries is about $4,286. We have a $500 increase in innovators workshop support for air filters for the, our laser etcher, which was purchased this year thanks to a grant from Pura, which was a PEGPISHA grant. A $420 increase in computer software for public PC timing, which was essential to us during the pandemic so that we can more easily regulate the time people are allowed to use the computers at the library. $2,500 increase in cleaning supplies due to COVID. Obviously, that will need those going forward. $400 increase in equipment for an AED battery for our AED piece of equipment. Then we have some utilities increases, $430 for natural gas, $1,330 for electricity. We will, will, sorry, we will likely see a savings in the electricity line due to the upgrade in the, the lighting that just took place. And then we have a $3,000 reduction in administrative contractual services due to a change in vendor for our digital magazine contents. As we're always looking at new ways to save money. Our proposed service restoration is actually the second part of the restoration from last year's request to restore the material allocation from the adult department to its 2008 level. And this will restore the children's material allocation to the 2008 level. And why is this important? The library's children's collection supports our youngest residents, early literacy and supports the school curriculum and learning of our students, which has actually been much more significant this past year. We have been providing multiple copies of eBooks so that children who are learning remotely have access to them. And that's been supported through the library budget for the school. And as you can imagine, the types of material available has expanded drastically in the last 13 years. We can now purchase things like Vox books, which are talking books that have integrated audio encompassed in them. And then too, speaking to EDI, there are also now a vast number of books being published featuring diverse authors and diverse content. And I think it's in the best interest of our community to make sure that our collection is kept current and up to date so that we have those kinds of materials available. And then unfortunately, the Friends of the Library, as you know, provide great support to the library every year. But during the pandemic, they were prevented from holding their annual book sale, which had a drastically negative impact on their budget and their incomes. So, unfortunately, the support budget for the library was cut in half. So, as you can see, they used to support the children's material line with $9,000 a year. And then this year and next year, we anticipated only being at the $3,000 level. And we've talked about this in the past, the Friends of the Library support is, they're so generous and we value them so greatly for everything they can provide to us. But it's not guaranteed funding. So, I think this just highlights that. And then our CNR project is replacement of the Public Reference Adult Services Tech Lab, Public Children's Department Technology and the Public Borrowing and Technical Services Technology for a small amount of money this year of $5,760. But it's part of the larger replacement plan for the library's public technology. And I can tell you that in 2018, 2019, which was our, you know, pre-pandemic times, public technology at the library was used 84,315 times by people across, you know, across the year. And speaking to the larger technology replacement plan that was talked about in the IT budget, it's of great importance to the library and it's definitely a best practice to regulate budget over the course of years. Just this past year, the library replaced PCs that were 13 years old. And I can tell you, those 13-year-old PCs created workflow issues. They created efficiency issues and we're so grateful to have them replaced. So, having that structured technology replacement plan that we can depend on to replace both staff PCs and public PCs, super important. We have people that use our public PCs to apply for jobs. So, we need to keep them current so that it can, the PCs can keep current with software used by companies for their employment applications. Thank you very much. That's what I have for you this morning.
Thank you. What questions do folks have for Lisa?
Eric, it's Chris. Can I just, just jump in? So, you know, the, as a probably, you know, maybe, maybe not the, the library board's first choice for BOS Lahezon. I, I do, it is quite remarkable to, to see what, I think, what, what that team does, the library does in general. We, we don't, we, we all collectively, I think, respect that. Just, just in pure support, absolute support, you know, times two of Lisa's presentation. The, as I, as I get educated better each day around the Friends of the, the library and their efforts, it's one of those organizations that, you know, many of us just aren't aware of if we're not, if we're not users of the library. But the impact that those volunteers and the impact that, that, those events from just from a straight dollar contribution standpoint have, that we don't necessarily, as small or large, necessarily have to address because of what they're able to do. It's, it's massive. And in the end, in the impact of what they haven't been able to deliver back to the library because of COVID and those numbers is, is, is meaningful and impactful. And, and I would carry that forward. The, the ask around materials. Last year, we, we, we didn't get all the way there. But, but we, we answered part of the calling relative to supporting materials budget. And, you know, considering what we've come through and where we're going and considering the audience that those materials are going to go to, the children, that's what the, the foundation of a library is all about, I think, is, 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 is part of the expansion and development of a child's mind, right? That's where it all starts. It's, it's not for the adults, it's for the child and the growth that occurs. And, you know, we think about what materials can be purchased in, with, with those monies relative to, for, for children. And you think about going back to, tie it back to the Spirit Council and their efforts around awareness and education in, in the concept of materials. And I would think that, you know, this is, this is probably the first step before theirs possibly to me. And just, I really want, I, I, you know, I'm a strong advocate. And to me, we've got to find a way to, that's a layup to me, is to support them and their ask. So, that's my, my sermon.
Thank you, Chris.
The last of the morning sermons. Sean.
I have just a quick question. And it's not about the, it's not about the materials. The cleaning supplies, the 2,500 for, I guess, COVID, I guess I'd ask Maria, wouldn't that be covered by the FEMA reimbursement we got?
I'll defer to Amy on that. I can't recall if FEMA did authorize the cleaning supplies or not as a reimbursable expense. Amy, did they ultimately do that?
FEMA has not done anything for us. So, we have gone back and forth with them since probably last July. And we got really close a couple of months ago. And then they had a question on something and then it's been a ghost town since. So, honestly, we don't know what's coming from FEMA and what's not coming from FEMA. But it is anticipated that we will get some, hopefully some additional COVID revenue in fiscal year 22, like Maria had mentioned. But again, we just, we just don't know.
And we have, the library has been supporting that with providing all of the things that we have purchased that might be reimbursable on a monthly basis.
Okay. And Amy, we did receive some money then. It wasn't from FEMA, it was from the state?
Yeah, we did receive some money from the state of Connecticut that was approved. Just, we haven't gotten anything from FEMA.
Okay. Thanks.
I also wanted to recognize Marion O'Neill, who's Chair of the Libraries Board, who's here. Marion, I just wanted to see if there was anything that you wanted to share or add.
No, we just really appreciate all the support we've already had. I agree with everything Chris has said. I think it's really critical to advance, get more money for our resource. I agree with everything Chris has said. I think it's really critical to advance, get more money for our resources and especially for the children. And if you go forward and you're thinking of the Spirit Council and how we can meet the, where we want Simsbury to be, you do start with the youngest kids, and I think that's imperative. And just going to the other capital request, we were in a state where we didn't know whether we would even be able to support the computers until we went to that four-year plan. So you, the Board of Selectmen has always been a perfect support for our library, and we really appreciate it. And just looking forward to doing whatever we can, especially as we develop our plan, to make sure that the library is doing whatever we can to get Simsbury to where it wants to be. Not as just as an institution, but to help the community reach its goals.
Thanks, Marion. Are there other questions for the library?
Question from, from my side. So as a, as a new parent of a kindergartner and getting a tour of Latimer, one of the things that Principal Zetti noted was the volume of, of titles in Latimer versus other schools, and they were behind. How does it work with, are we buying six titles and putting them in, in six different buildings in the town? And I mean, is there, is there a lot of redundancy? Because, you know, we buy a Dr. Seuss book in, in Terrafill, and we buy the same book in, in the other schools, and then we also buy it in the library? And is, is that the way we have to do it? Is that the way we should do it? Or is there a, a different way to look at materials for, for kids in, in totality in the town? Because what I'm worried about is, is, is we're buying the same thing five or six times.
Well, I think, speaking to that, you increase access to all of the children in the community when you have that same title in all of the different schools as well as the public library. And you have to also think about it, you have younger children that visit the public library that are not yet in school, so you want them to have access to the titles as well.
Agree, but I guess is, is, are we unintentionally duplicating something that we don't necessarily? I, I guess what I'm asking ignorantly is, is do we need to buy books for first graders at the library and at all the schools? You know, I mean, not, not pushing back on the requests, I'm just trying to, you know, understand, you know, with the whole interdepartmental loans that we do across the state, right? I mean, is it the same kind of thing we do in a part, interdepartmental town loans? And again, I want kids to have all access to them and not slowing it down. But it just, what was striking to me is that Latimer had thousands of less titles than another school did. And, you know, there's kind of a disparity to begin with. So, you know, as we're looking at childhood reading across the town, is there a way to consolidate that, I guess?
Well, public libraries share amongst themselves. We don't do that much sharing within the school districts, within the municipalities. But you also have to think there are certain titles that are not, that are not held at the school libraries because their budgets are tight as well, and those titles can be gotten from the public library. And if you look at this year during the pandemic, we were specifically requested by the school district to purchase multiple copies of eBook content so children would have access to them.
Yeah, and it's, it's interesting. And then, yeah, on the tour, getting the, they got the holdout bin where you got to leave them in a corner for three days. So we don't trade for COVID via books. It was a, it was, it was an interesting educational piece for me. Thank you. Appreciate it, Lisa.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay. Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
All right. I will turn it over to Tom Tbersky and Orlando for Culture Parks and Rec. Also want to acknowledge Dave Bush is with us, who's Chair of Culture Parks and Rec Commission.
Tom, I'm you.
You did.
There we go. I apologize, and thank you for letting me know. I would have just kept going. I just wanted to start off, but thanking you this morning for your time and allowing us the, the time to present to you our, our budget and our requests. I did want to just start off by thanking our, all of our staff at the Parks and Recreation Department for all that they have done during this last challenging year. From our frontline seasonal staff to our parks and golf maintainers and our administrative staff, every single one of them has gone above and beyond to ensure that there were safe and abundant opportunities for our residents to recreate during the pandemic. So just a big thank you to them, you know, before we get into this. So I'm going to start off a little bit different than, than my, my cohorts. I have, as you may know, I'm, I'm the president of the, current president of the Connecticut Parks and Recreation Association. And, and as such, we do a lot of advocacy for our depart, for our member towns and municipalities throughout the state. And one of the things that we did this past year was an effort to show that we're not just soccer fields or baseball fields or trails, we're, we're so much more. And if you allow me just to share this, this brief commercial with you that we put together.
We're so much more. We are the go-to for affordable childcare such as after-school programs and summer camps. We create safer communities by providing life-saving education and emergency services. Our departments maintain safe access to parks and open spaces, keeping recreation opportunities available year-round. We're here to create opportunities for people of all ages and abilities to live an active and healthy lifestyle, supporting mental and physical wellness. Your local park and recreation department. It's so much more. We're so much.
Thank you for allowing me to share that. I appreciate it. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we got you, son.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was still good. So moving, moving into our slides, the, the fiscal year twenty-two budgets. It, we have, obviously, as you know, we're split between the general fund and the, and the special revenue fund, or what was called the Special Revenue Fund. Total operating budget of three million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Parks Administration, sixty-two, three thirty-five, three forty-five, I apologize. You can see, I'm not going to go through the numbers one by one here, but you can see how we're broken up through our, through our divisions. The Parks Golf Recreation Administration, Special Programs, which is where our day camps and our after-school programs and events are typically run out of. The Simsbury Farms complex is your rink and your pools. And then our, our administrative budget at the bottom here. We are budgeted at eighteen FTEs. As you'll see with the golf course, we actually have four. It says six, we have four full-time, but we have an additional four part-time staff that basically they work out to be two, they're counted as two full-time FTEs there. We are hoping that you will consider allowing us, or providing funding for an additional nineteenth person. And that would be our tech Parks and Rec Technician Program, Facilities Technician Staff Member that we'll discuss later, later in the presentation. Our areas of focus this year, obviously, COVID-19 put a stall on many of our initiatives last year. But as we progress into the coming year, we hope to bring back, safely bring back our programs and services and events back to the expectation of our community. Simsbury celebrates, should be back this fall. Our, we're looking at almost a full pool season. Additional swimming lessons will be brought back. We hope to have a full rink season and be able to offer a full season of lessons and rentals and public skating back to our participants and our residents come next year. Obviously, our golf course, as you all know, had a phenomenal year last year. And our staff did a lot of exceptional work to make that a safe opportunity for our residents. They will continue to do the, do the same as we open up this spring and through the remainder of the year. Certainly, the golf course and many of our programs are dependent on, on good weather for, for a lot of success. But fingers crossed, we'll, we'll be at least where, where we were in the, in the, our good years. We're going to continue implementing recommendations and concepts from our Park and Open Space Master Plan. These include the, the entrance signs to our parks, the trail wayfinding signage. We're working with Eagle Scouts to get some of that done. We're going to be hopefully implementing the recommendation for a new staff member to help us maintain our existing facilities. We're going to continue to diversify our program catalog, hopefully offering, hoping to, to offer more adult programs, more events, and actually more preschool programs as well. We're going to increase our use and awareness of town parks, trails and open space. Obviously, last year, everybody was outdoors. They saw what we had. They're becoming more familiar with it. But we really want to make, you know, make people aware of what we, what we have to offer here. Again, signage will help in some of these places. We hope to do some digital trail mapping and make those more readily available by, within, by having signage on our website or awareness on our website and signage in the parks. Where if you are at a trailhead, you can kind of use your cell phone, use a QR code to get your cell phone up and, and you'll have that trail map or any, any special amenities that might be in that area. And, and in a perfect world, you, if you see a tree down or you see a broken piece of equipment, you'll be able to report it back to us through that same app. And, and that's something we think will be really beneficial to us as we move forward. And we're going to continue the maintenance of fencing along the trails and the greenways and in our parks. As those things have continued to age, and just like we have the windstorms in the night, we have trees and branches falling down on some of our things that we have to fix. Our budget highlights, as you've heard me say for the last two years, the minimum wage increases continue to be the biggest driver in our additional funding requests. We are the largest employer of teenagers in town. And as such, teenagers and college students. And as such, we see every time that minimum wage goes up a dollar or more, we, we see a large increase in, in our funding request in order to deliver the services that we currently have. This is lifeguards, park maintenance personnel, the, the maintenance personnel we have at the seasonal maintenance personnel we have at the golf course, our camp counselors, our rink personnel, it's across the board. We are asking for a nine thousand dollar increase in our Parks Division for agricultural supplies. You are aware that the field use account is not performing as intended. What, obviously, COVID-19 didn't bring in any money last spring into that account. And over previous years, what's been happening since that was implemented is, is we, we get a ten dollar per player typically for the youth sports and fifteen for the, the college-age sports. It's just not, not meeting the needs of what those, what we have in the field, the grass seed, the fertilizer, the, the lining paint for fields. Our, our groups are really good about paying for their goals and their nets and things like that, and the equipment that they use on the field. But the basic care and maintenance of those, of that, of those fields falls on the town, should fall on the town, and it does. When that field, field pay-per-play, I guess basically, was implemented about seven or eight years ago, there was a corresponding decrease, I think the following year, in, in the town's Park Division agricultural supplies. So what we did have before and were, and was basically eliminated, and we haven't, hasn't been replaced. And the current money coming in isn't enough to take care of those fields as you all would expect your fields to be cared for. And then with the water increase, we didn't, we didn't have an approval to install an irrigation system last fall at Hopbrook Landing. So we're going to see an increase in our water bill to irrigate that new park. And we've seen, as water rates have increased, we have seen, we have seen increases in our other facilities that have aquarium water. The one park that we do not have aquarium water, well, is our golf course and Curtis Park. So we don't see, you know, in dry years, we don't see a lot, we don't see an increase there, but we do see an increase at Memorial Field when it's dry. Henry James and other fields, Sweet Dog Park, those kind of fields. So those are our big increases this year. We're going to see every, as Maria mentioned before in the Town Manager's Budget, we're going to see a reduction in some expenses to the general fund, into the Revenue Fund, I'm sorry, from pension insurance and some of our utilities, such as the phone that she mentioned before. I think that'll help us going forward as, you know, typically you've increased the, the general fund contribution to the Special Revenue Fund. This year, we're not going to get that increase, but we're getting it basically in a different way. So I appreciate that, the investigative work that Maria and Melissa and Amy did to kind of find those, find those areas of over, overcharging in that account. It's too bad it wasn't found eight years ago, but it's, we're really appreciative of it going forward. So she, we talked about the, the consistent, the one eighty-one, seven fifteen contribution from the general fund. Again, it's level funded, basically. And we do appreciate that the, the medical loan closet, the expenses associated with that, the heating and the electricity to heat that closet for those volunteers who are doing such great work over there won't be burdened on the Revenue Fund any longer. This proposed budget does maintain our current, current level of services with the, with the deficiencies in the Revenue Fund that we do know about. We hope that in the future, we'll continue to work on those deficiencies, whether it's a budget restructuring or for further subsidy from the general fund. And if everything goes to plan, the Revenue Fund would finish in a positive position. I'll stop right there for a moment. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, keep going. As we've noted in the, in the Parks and Open Space Master Plan and other conversations with your board, the general fund per capita spending for Parks and Recreation in Simsbury remains the lowest, remains among the lowest, at least of our comparable towns in Greater Hartford. And we have a number of CNR projects that we hope to discuss with you in a few minutes that will address a variety of maintenance, maintenance needs at Simsbury Farms and our town parks. So going into our CNR projects, one that's been on your radar for a couple of years in the CN, in the plan has been the Simsbury Farms Playground. That playground was built in nineteen ninety-four. Many of you have been there, you've seen it, you grew, either you grew up on it or you've been taking your kids to it. It has aged, and it's, it's definitely showing its age. The pictures below, one of them is a staircase, and if you can, if you notice in the staircase, it's actually starting to crack the end of the treads, and I'll kind of have my arrow here pointing to it. You'll see cracks forming here. And cracks forming here. We had a similar issue on this bridge on the right-hand picture a few years ago. Orlando's guys were able to, to fix it a little bit, and they put a coating on it. It's not, there's no replacement for this, for this bridge. If it cracks again, we would have to remove it. Same thing with a staircase like this. We just can't get the parts for this playground any longer. And temporary fixes don't last very long. We're going to see this happening throughout this playscape as we continue to move forward. The guys have been great about fixing what they can, but it's just gotten to the point at twenty-seven years, twenty-seven years now, you just can't refix some, fix some of those things any longer. There are some accessibility issues here that a new playground, new playscape would, would address. And again, it would be similar to, not on the scale of the Balmis Playground, but close to the Rotary Park Playground. Similar surfacing around the playscape would be necessary. Obviously, accessibility to all the play pieces is a, is a certain need that we feel needs to be addressed here. And a playground of this scope generally costs about two hundred thousand dollars. We are exploring grant opportunities as they become available to see if we can knock that off as we progress. But it's something that, that we hope you will consider funding this year. Our ice rink chiller is the next on the list here. You've, you've funded the last two years, projects at the rink to renovate the, the aging systems up there. At first, we did the condenser. That was installed this past fall. We will have the control panel installed this spring when we close up shop in March here. And the next major piece of, major component system that needs to be replaced is the chiller. The chiller is basically the, the circulatory system of the ice rink. It's what keeps the floor cold and keeps our ice hard. If this system were to fail, we have a very large two-inch, two-inch depth of puddle in our ice rink. And generally, the life expectancy of this piece of equipment is fifteen to twenty years. Once this system is, is replaced, we, our ice rink should be good, again, for the next twenty years and, and more energy efficient than it was as built. So we hope you will consider funding this final piece of the puzzle, so to speak. Additionally, we have painted the ceiling of the rink this past fall. We had an unexpected opportunity to replace the, the lighting in the rink this past fall to an LED, to LED lighting, thanks to Tom Roy and, and his staff helping us with that. It's, the reviews from him have been fantastic. You know, we wish we could have had more people there this past winter, but as we go forward, I think the public will really appreciate it. Any questions on the first two projects? No, thank you.
Tom, it's Chris. I forget, did you guys replace the netting too?
We haven't replaced, if you're talking about the netting in the rink, we have not replaced it. Actually, it may have been replaced before I got here. I'll let Orlando address that.
Yeah, Chris, that netting was done about, I think, eighteen years ago, so it's been up there for a while now. It's original. We probably retied it differently, so it might look slightly different than, than it did last year, but it's the same netting.
Is there, it just, is there, the reason why I'm asking is, is, I thought, I thought there was some sort of ask around that net last year's conversation, and it just, it's coming to mind because you painted the ceiling and you, and you put new lights up there, you're sort of, so to speak, you're up there. So was there an opportunity to, to repair it or not? Were we going to get an ask on that?
Yeah, you know, those, yeah, those nettings, Chris, are, it's protected, so it's not being hit by sun or, or any type of moisture. They typically go thirty or forty years. It's showing no signs of wear and tear. That's why it wasn't replaced. I don't see any, any, any replacement in the next five to ten years, to be honest with you, because it is protected with the roof, so it's. because it is protected with the roof, so it's not seeing the sunlight that typically eats through the netting.
And Chris, that ask last year was for the, was for the ceiling painting and the insulation. We were able to do some of the insulation during this, during the past project this past fall. Unfortunately, as we've discovered, it's quite a job to replace the insulation the way it was installed in the rink. We had some additional contractors come out and consult with us. We did replace kind of piece by piece, some of the major areas of concern. But we don't plan on going back up in that ceiling anytime soon in the next couple of years. It's quite a, quite a job to get the netting up and down.
Okay, thank you, guys.
The next piece of equipment here that we're looking to fund is a parks mower. There's a picture of it right here. You've probably seen it out in the fields. It's a very large mower. It's our current piece of equipment has 6,457 hours. So if you, you know, if you had a Honda Civic in high school and you were still driving it, this is probably what it would look like if it was a mower. And, you know, we have, I think, Orlando, we have two of these, correct, that we use between all the different facilities?
Yeah, that's correct. We have two of these. Typically, you'll see these out at the parks and athletic fields. They mow about 25 to 30 acres a day. They're out there mowing typically, you know, these things are out there, you know, five days a week, mowing grass areas.
This is basically the workhorse of the Parks Department. So we hope you will consider funding this piece of equipment. The next piece of equipment is a Parks Utility Vehicle. I didn't show a picture of it here because it's actually so old, it's broken, and it's basically under a tarp right now. It does need to be replaced. The, you know, if you can imagine a souped-up golf cart with a bed on it, that's what this is for. It's moving, you know, basically used at Simsbury Farms to move heavy loads around the park. It moves our seasonal kids, use it to move weed whackers around to get to the far areas of the complex. But it gets us in areas where we can't get with a regular truck. So that's important. We have a lot of uneven ground on the the Simsbury Farms fitness trails. So when they're out there getting, cutting down, or cutting up limbs that have fallen or fixing washouts, that's what they're using this for. And again, some of the tree work and other areas of the complex as well, but it's more than a golf cart. And so you're going to see it compared to a golf cart request, a golf piece of equipment later. The difference is that one's primarily used for moving light material and our seasonal kids around the course. This is moved, this is used to move heavy materials that we can't use a truck for. So I hope you'll notice the difference. And obviously, in the cost, it's a more heavy-duty piece of equipment. Last year, we came to you with a funding request for the gazebo at Schultz Park. Unfortunately, it wasn't funded last year, but it took another year of deterioration on it. We hope that, you know, if this money will be used to fix the, basically a total renovation of the gazebo. The roof is leaking. And when the roof leaks, it leaks through the materials below. So we need to replace some of the framing of that gazebo now. It needs a paint job. Schultz Park is one of those area, underutilized areas that we are hoping to increase the awareness of. The volunteers over there do a fantastic job of maintaining the specimen plants that are there. And you can just see it in the picture on the ceiling of the gazebo. There's actually a map of all the specimen plants. So as people are moving about the park, it kind of gives them an idea if they want to go look at a particular plant species or flower. It gets them there a little easier, but the crew over there does a fantastic job of maintaining, alongside our guys, do a fantastic job of really having a showcase showcase park right in the center of town, Pocket Park, that not a lot of people know about or have been to probably. But, you know, it's something we're going to try to increase the awareness of. And but to keep that gazebo safe, we do need the funding to repair it. We've had the last two years, in fiscal years, you have generously funded the playground improvements in our neighborhood parks around town. This would be year three of that. You're really going to start to see some action on this. COVID put a slowdown on us last summer. But the playground at West Mountain Park on West Mountain Road will be replaced this summer, early fall. Our next one will be Terrifill Park. And generally, it's a one-to-two-year project, you know, $25,000 covers replacement, maybe replacement pieces. It doesn't cover the whole unit. So so generally, the next two years would fund the improvement at Terrifill Park. And then we'll move on to the other ones like Weetog Park, Mountain Meadow Pond Park, as we continue to go around our park system and update these playgrounds that have aged. Any questions? And I appreciate your consideration of this as a plan going forward in other fiscal years as well. It's been great to kind of keep moving forward on this.
Can I ask you a quick question about the gazebo, just for the heck of it?
Yep.
So like, you're trying to get awareness for Schultz Park. And do we ever do any, like, community builds? Like, instead of the $10,000 out of our budget, you know, open it up as a town project and have people donate, contribute, you know, resources and actually do the work themselves? Is that something we've ever done?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. You know, the last three years I've been here, we haven't done anything like that. And I'm not aware of it in my previous tour here, but maybe somebody who's been around a little bit longer knows about that.
I'm just saying, because you're saying you want to increase awareness. Well, that would get awareness, hopefully, and get people downtown to take part in something like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could certainly consider. I was hoping to have it fixed and get people there to enjoy it. That's kind of, that's the avenue I was coming from, perspective I was coming from on it. But, but yeah, I mean, we have some places like, I mean, obviously, the big hit last year was the Hot Brook Landing Park. There was, you know, throughout COVID, that was probably the hottest spot in town. You can never get a parking, you can never get parking there, which we're going to, we're going to address with some directional signage this spring. But, you know, that park was busy from eight in the morning through eight at night, almost every day of the pandemic. And we hope to be able to kind of spread the wealth around town and get people to enjoy these other, you know, quiet sanctuary right in the center of town. You know, Schultz Park, there's benches. This gazebo is a nice spot to just enjoy your town as you're walking by. So.
Yeah, Wendy, I think it's a great question. I just, I don't know what the infrastructure would look like to actually get the word out, advertise this, and then assist the volunteers in doing this kind of work. I mean, I think it's a neat idea. It reminds me of the Eagle Scout projects that I know your department supports.
Yeah, we all painted the sidewalk too, just to, that Pride sidewalk. Everybody participated. Go ahead, Tom.
Yep. No, yeah, I was just going to say, we have used Eagle Scouts quite a bit. We haven't had one that's come to us and be willing to take this product, this project on. I think it's, one might be a little bit more with the restoration than an Eagle Scout would typically do. We do have a scout who will be doing basketball court renovation at West Mountain Park this spring. I'm working with another one right now to solidify their plan for trail signage and maybe an information kiosk at Onion Mountain Park. So when they come to us, we kind of have some things in mind. This wasn't one of the ones I had in mind for an Eagle Scout. Again, I think the scope of the work is a little bit more than what they would typically do.
Tom, real quick question. Sorry. What does $25,000 buy you, looking at that playground?
It doesn't buy you a whole playground. That replacement of this is probably, you know, there's, this is one, you know, you have this main unit and then you have a couple of little play pieces there. Between the surfacing and that, that's probably about $35,000 to $50,000 right there. I mean, things are a little bit different. $25,000 would maybe fix. Would, I'm trying to think what's the best way to say. Orlando, you're more well-versed in this.
Yeah, Eric, $25,000 would probably just replace just the equipment alone. Just to purchase the equipment. Forget about the installation cost and also the material cost for the surfacing. So this stuff is really expensive, our equipment, and it doesn't get you very far. That's why it takes two years to actually do one, one park, one playscape.
That's what I suspected. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Orlando. Next up for discussion is the Golf Clubhouse Systems Replacement. What we're hoping to do is a two-year plan here. The building is at 20, is at 20 years now, maybe slightly over. There's a lot of improvements that need to be made up there as our systems are starting to fail. HVAC system, plumbing, fixtures in the restrooms are wearing out. Our doors are wearing out, the door hardware. So we hope to start replacing some of those things, energy-efficient doors, new faucets, urinals, toilets, partitions in the bathrooms, flooring will all be a part of this, but the HVAC system is probably going to be the heart, what gets the most attention. We've had, we kind of nursed the air conditioning system along quite a bit last summer. We don't, again, heating is part of that as well. We have appliances in the restaurant that belong to the town that are are wearing out and going to need to be replaced in the coming years. So what we're looking at is hoping to get funding for two years, year one, $35,000, year two, $65,000. This is not including the roof that will need to be replaced. We have in the six-year plan, a number to hold that, to get that roof replaced. As any of you have been up there, you know it's windy, you know it's windier there than anywhere else in town. We are having shingles starting to fail and blow off when we have these windstorms. That will, you know, certainly lead to other things with leaks and that kind of thing. So that's a separate request. This is basically the internal systems of the building that we're hoping to replace in the next two years with this funding. Does anybody have any questions about the clubhouse? And I appreciate your support last year for the paint funding. If you've seen it, it looks great.
I have a general question, another one, kind of relates to this, but it's maybe more of a Maria question, and we may address it later, but what determines which projects, like through Parks, Culture Parks and Rec, we go to the general fund versus capital reserves? Like, I see the playscape for the farms as capital reserves, so it doesn't come out of the general fund, whereas some of the golf course stuff does come out of the general fund, some comes out of the equipment fund. So how do we, how do we determine that, in a nutshell, I guess?
Sure, sure. So I think what's helpful to frame is that the general fund, sort of committed traditional five-year payback period, it's a really small amount when you think about the scale of our needs. It's 416, 250. And that's for all of our town departments, you know, organization-wide, our IT needs, parks needs, police needs, Public Works needs. Where parks is a little different than some of our other departments, because other than a very small golf surcharge fee for equipment purchases, they don't have another source of revenue available for us to fund their projects. So for example, with Public Works, we have Towny and Road, so that can help take a little bit of pressure off of the payback method because we can purchase certain eligible pieces of equipment or vehicles with that money. Another example is we sometimes use excess funds available in the private duty funds. I know we just did a purchase over the summer, for example, right, of some admin vehicles that needed to be replaced. So for parks, because they don't have another source of revenue like that, I would say it's more important, in a sense, for us to rely on the general fund money, because we don't have other opportunities to offset their needs. I think, you know, one of the things that Melissa, Amy and I really discovered as we dug more into the budgeting over the last two years is I think that's, in a way, how we sort of dug ourselves into the hole of having such a backlog of parks needs in terms of, right, rotted signs, playscapes that are outdated and falling apart. The Weetog Backstop, which actually isn't on here, but it does need to be replaced, is more than 40 years old and doesn't meet modern code. But that's an example of it's falling apart, but it's not falling apart as bad as these other parks need. So, you know, we kind of take a look again at that overall funding, but really look at what's available to our department's organization-wide. And it is a little bit of a puzzle, right? And so we are trying to, in the CNR payback method, you know, trying to portion some things off that are a little bit more routine or ongoing in nature. For example, the playscapes that are smaller scale, the park signs versus something like the Simsbury Farms playscape replacement. Because our excess cash unfortunately has been stripped out of our budget so significantly the last few years, and we will talk more about this in the afternoon. We just don't have the $200,000 available with that 416 amount, right? That's like half of that money. But it is important. It is well past its useful life. And just because of the size of that particular project, that was why we suggested maybe considering using a bit of our capital reserve that we've built up for a project of that nature. Again, just because it is, you know, larger in size, but it doesn't really reach the threshold where it should warrant bonding. So those are some of the types of, you know, decision-making and points that we looked at and trying to, you know, really come up with the allocation for the various CNR projects.
Thanks, Maria. Before we go on, I just wanted to just check in. I understand we have a hard stop at 12:30.
This might be a good point to break. It is 12:30, so I'm glad you caught that, Eric.
So I apologize, Tom, for asking you to split your presentation, but we'll pick this up right at 1 o'clock.
Not a problem.
Okay. Anything else before we go on a little break? All right. Wish everyone a good lunch. Talk to you soon.